Um.
Yeah, so.
He was here just morning.
Okay.
So I put in my.
Okay.
I've got six of them. We're running a little bit late. I'll call this, uh, meeting of the Jefferson County Board of Zoning and Field Order. And if, uh, if you would, uh, let's break. Dear Father, we come to you thanking you just once again for blessings. It's such a beautiful day here in East Tennessee, and thank you for the help and ability you give each and every one of us, dear God, to get up and go about today. And I pray, Lord, that you're pleased with how we live out there. As we come together tonight, I pray that you gather our conversation, our business, or, uh, dear God, our words, if you would, uh, season them in a way that they'd be pleasing to you, dear God, and that we identify one another. And, uh, just help us to make the savings tonight, dear God, that, uh, glorify you and benefit this county. Uh, I ask, Lord, that, uh, you watch over our county and, uh, all the, uh, the government bodies of it, dear God, and just guide them. And I ask our state and our country as well, Lord. We love you and thank you for everything that you've done for us. For most of our, we thank you for your son and what he did and the work on the cross. And it's in his name, in Jesus' name, that we give you thanks and ask these things. Amen.
Say, pledge, attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I was looking at the citizens' input, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we have anything, citizens' input-wise, for the board of zoning fields, correct? Everything, everybody will speak on plan commission. Okay, good deal. Uh, I trust you received your packets all but Sue. If you had an opportunity to glance at the minutes.
Yeah.
Uh, is there any corrections or amendments to those? Being none, anything motion to approve?
I make a motion.
You have a motion. Second. Discussion on that. All those in favor of approving minutes. Marches meeting, let it be known, I say aye. All those opposed, motion passed. Took care of the citizens' input already. Uh, have, uh, item number six on the agenda. Variants request for a garage violation of front of property at 419 Terryport Road in Dandridge by Winston Smith. Is anyone?
Yes, sir. I was just wanting to do a pole shed to the right side of my driveway facing my house, uh, to stall or to keep my mowing equipment, bush hog, tractor implements, things such as that. Uh, this is the only level spot on the front of the house that I can do due to the field line in the back going towards the waterfront and the 1002 flood line.
Now, I'm looking at the dimensions on, Lord, I, is it 24 by 36?
Twenty-four by thirty-six.
Can't, when you put out, look at this, uh.
I see no issues.
See no issues with it. We granted other variances out through there for, for projects such as this.
You might base it on the shape of the lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the, the angle of that everywhere. I'm turning it along in run of the driveway. So I can, it'll be long, run a long ways, so I can just pull up and basically just back everything into the shed and go on up to the house from there.
Do we have any questions from Mr. Smith on this? Being none, I'll say aye, boy.
I make a motion. We grant variance. We have proper motion. We have second.
I'll say.
Second. There ain't further discussion about granting variance before. Being none, all those in favor of granting variance, let it be known, I say aye. All those opposed, motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, variance request for size and height on a proposed billboard sign off of Cook Mill Road, Dandridge by Wesley S. Is he on here?
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for your time tonight.
Okay, Mr. Mr. S, you are Mr. S.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes.
You're going to install a 20 by 50 billboard with a height of 65 feet, is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Everyone had a letter in their package concerning this. Sue, I know you probably haven't had a chance to take a look at it yet.
Mm-hmm.
But if you would, go ahead and tell us a little bit about the reasoning why, and.
Uh, basically, I'm just wanting to put up a, an LED billboard, uh, really for the benefit of the small business person in this area. Uh, auto repair facilities and your favorite dentist and the like, PSAs for the county and the city. Um, um, it is, uh, on a piece of property they have out that overlooks Highway 40. Um, I'm far outside of the states right away. I've already contacted them. They've confirmed to me that there's not a, an issue that they would have. Uh, so it would be up to this body to determine whether or not that'd be okay. Similar to what is right here on, uh, 92 coming into town, it's, it's much smaller than the one I need to do, but, uh, if you've noticed, it's right there by Owen's Restaurant. If you've seen it, it's an LED billboard. Again, mine would just need to be larger because it's so far off of the road.
I think that was a 10 by, 10 by 20, 12 by 24, something like that, the ones going.
Yeah.
Ms. Baldwin, wanted to, I can see your opinion here, but what's, uh, what are your thoughts on this?
Um, variance is from the zoning orders are supposed to be based on hardship, and if the, if the, if the use is not substantiated within the code, um, a hardship has to be based on something that is not just the selection of the requestor, the applicant. Um, I don't see a hardship here. Uh, and if you're going to start granting variances from the height and square footage of your signs, um, that's a very slippery slope. Most will not have them because you will never be able to get somebody to be compliant again. That's been my, uh, my experience to date. Um. You also said it was going to be an LED lit sign.
Mm-hmm.
Um, those are the ones that are, uh, difficult to, um, control the, uh, timing of the sign and also the intensity of light. Um, and a lot of times when you're focusing on vehicles, if they look up and if there is a tendency for a minute, they, it literally confuses their, uh, when they look at something else. It's like looking at a bright light and then looking back on the road. So it does present a safety issue, Mike.
Hmm. Well, I'm, I'm over 1,100 feet off of the road, so this is not like a, a billboard you typically see, even the one that's already existing. You're probably aware there. It's about mile marker, it's about a mile and a half before 407, the exit there, and it's, it's 100 feet off the road. Um, so I'm wondering if that's, i- i- if that's kind of a mute point, given that there's already a sign like this, but certainly much closer to the road than mine would be. So, Sevier County must have, you know, must have considered that and decided that it was not any type of a safety issue. So, at 1,100 feet, that's a lot further than the 100 feet of the sign that's currently there.
I understand.
And just going with you, what's your limitations? Why do you have to be so far from it? Is that on, is your property?
It's my property line, yes, sir.
That's your property?
Yes, sir.
Mm-hmm. Have you spoke to adjacent property owners about this? Just curious.
I, I have, but the only thing there is, uh, it's, it's, it's cattle. I mean, somebody uses it to, for, for cattle. There's no houses within a mile at least.
And the, the rooftop we see in the pictures, that's?
That's a barn. That's a, that's a barn, yeah. Yeah. It's an old barn, Phil has.
I understand, uh, what you're trying to do and, and, and the reasoning behind it, but I also do understand, Ms. Baldwin, the point that once we start giving variances for these, you know, where we stop on those things. Does anyone have any questions, Mr. S?
Who owns the barn?
Is that, that's on neighbor's property?
It's on the neighbor's property, yeah.
Okay.
I could look him up. I, I don't know him. I've met him, but I can't remember his name.
The size, the sign is now, can you not read it from there, sir?
Uh, well, there, there's no sign there yet, um, so I'm wanting one that obviously, you know, is big enough to, to, to be able to read from the interstate. So, the, the typical billboard size at 10 by 30 would just, it would be.
And you wouldn't be able to read that?
I, I don't feel like it would be visible enough, especially given the, the, the cost of installing the sign, and then if it can't be enlarged later, you know, not getting the kind of results that, you know, would make it viable as a advertising medium.
I'm certain you've talked with the company who will be doing the installation of this, and where is their company? What's their?
They're called TWI Construction. They're out of Kansas City. They put these all over the country. Um, you're not going to be seeing static billboards coming up anymore. It's all going to be LED. Uh, that's just the wave of the future. So you're, you're going to be presented with this much more often than you might think. They're coming. Uh, and there's already evidence of that, again, the one that's already on the other side of 407, and even the small one here on 92. Uh, static signs are just proving not to catch people's attention. Everyone's looking at their phone all the time, you know? That's what they're used to. So.
So, the, it, does that company, have they done studies on the visibility of the signs and how far a 10 by 30 would project?
They, yeah, they, that's why they recommended the, the larger size. They said, Wes, we could do it. We can build it, but you're just not going to get the results you want because it, it's not visible, not enough.
Do we have any other questions? Being none, I want to say aye, boy.
I'm going to make a motion to deny the request based on the constitutional hardship.
Okay. We have a proper motion. We have second.
I'll say.
We have second. Do we have any discussion? Being none, all those in favor of denying the request, let it be known, I say aye.
Okay, and, uh, just so I can, if you can refresh my mind, the, the terminology you used for the denial was based upon the, what again?
Constitution of hardship.
The hardship, okay. And what, where can I find information on that? My lawyer will want to, want, want to review that. You said the hardship is?
It is a Tennessee code for, uh, variance from the sign. I'm sure you can look it up.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Good evening.
You too, sir. Moving down the agenda, item number eight, anything motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Motion at second.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourned, let it be known, I say aye. All opposed. All those now adjourned. Call the other planning commissioners in with the table.
I'll be ready to wait a little bit.
Let Andy in there.
Oh, sure. I don't want to set too much. We need a buzzer.
No problem. Uh, I'm going to call the order of this meeting of the Jefferson County Planning Commission. And, yeah, I trust you had your minutes and had the opportunity to, uh, to review those. Are there any corrections? Amendments? Being none, entertain the motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Have proper motion. We have second.
Second.
Have any discussion on approving minutes? Being none, all those in favor, let it be known, I say aye. All opposed. Pass. Citizens' input. We have, uh, had a few tonight, so, uh, guys, before we start into this, we're going to limit this to three minutes per person, and, uh, I ask that you respect the other people's time. Uh, if someone speaks in front of you that covers exactly what you're wanting to speak to, and you have nothing to add to that or to improve it, uh, let's move on with business. That way we can get this stuff done that we've got to do now, okay? I appreciate that. So first person I have is, uh, Carolyn S. Allen. Is Allen here?
I am.
Okay, so, okay.
But mine is not an current agenda item. Let me wait till the end.
I see now what it says previous, and if you would, be willing to, we'll wait for it. Thank you so much.
And would you all kindly use your microphones?
Yes.
Thank you.
Look, we got background for you last time. We had to look together to.
Okay.
Chairman, I found the microphones work best if we use one at a time. I know Mr. Baldwin appreciates that, so he doesn't get blasted there and get the thumbs up. So turn them.
One at a time.
One at a time. Turn them back out.
When you're talking.
If we forget, somebody remind us.
I will.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Michael Ingram.
I come up yonder.
Yeah, you come up here, and if you would, state your name and your address, sir.
My name's Mike Ingram. I live, live 99 Blackcomb. Uh, there's a piece of property over there that's, they're looking at rezoning from A1 to C2, and there's been some talk about, some negative talk about some people not wanting it to happen, and the fellow's got a light up there that the sun's too bright and all this stuff. Other sitting right back here. Uh, his property is directly across from my family. We've been there 100 years, okay? There's four houses in front of his property. That's all my family. This is our front yard. It affects nobody on this planet more than it affects us. We have no problem whatsoever with any of it. This man purchased that property. It belongs to him. He should do whatever he wants to with it. My mother is 75 years old. This light is 50 yards from her porch. No problems whatsoever. Good neighbors is hard to come by. You know what I mean? This is a good neighbor. He ain't doing nothing to hurt nobody or nothing. And that's what that's about. It don't affect anybody more than it affects us. And it only, it, it affects us none at all. No problems whatsoever. Stand by and support him in what he's trying to do to make a living. Fair enough.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. That is property on the express. Jim Fox.
Good afternoon. Jim Fox, Abilene Trail. Uh, in October, this PC requested a meeting with the shed owners and the department heads. Uh, on 12/16, the zoning department violated the will, the pleasure of this commission by signing off on a plat on a space that was reserved strictly for the, uh, planning commission secretary. And in February, the RPC directed the.
Jim, I don't think we have anything about the shed.
Item G.
Item G. Plats. Okay. I mean, let's stick to the plats and to the shed, because the shed, we, we set that precedent last month, that everything that was done with those was cleared. Ms. Baldwin spoke to it, and the rest of us did too. What they did was legal, past presidents, so.
And they held a church camp this weekend, even though they were denied.
Uh, it's, and again, if, if, if they're breaking the law, that will be a matter of law enforcement. We can do nothing with that here.
Okay.
But please forgive me for interrupting, and you go right ahead, Mr. Fox.
Okay.
I'll give you your time back, too. I'm not going to cut you short on that.
Okay, let me regroup here for a second, if you would.
Yes.
In February, the, uh, this planning commission directed the zoning office to show proof of authority she had, that she could sign off on these things. In March, the zoning department violated the will and the pleasure of the planning, this planning commission by not doing so. The citizens provided the information for the, for this planning commission, but was, but was dismissed, and those same citizens were chastised by the chairman, even though the information submitted is on the county website. Also, the RPC voted to continue as we have always done until this meeting, even though those actions likely do not comply with Tennessee code. Lastly, a resolution was voted on and passed by this planning commission and is, was to be distributed to the planning commission of the, uh, cities of this county. The resul- resolution came back modified by the zoning department. No one in this planet has the, except the majority of this planning commission, has the authority to alter any document presented by the, this planning commission. This, thus, the will and the pleasure and the direction of this planning commission was violated again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Uh, William Billers.
I'm Bill Billers from 2202 Arrowhead Drive, and I'm here to talk about, uh, RPC subdivision approval authority and presumed county misconception stated at the March 25th meeting. I'm speaking for family and concerned residents. Among multiple comments at the March 25th RPC meeting, the chair said, or we inferred from comments, to call for somebody's job and not have all the information is out of line. You provided some inaccuracies to punishment. I did, or somebody did. Accused somebody of a misdemeanor is out of line. Everything worked out okay for the sheds, which are approved. Non-code compliant plat signature is okay because it fell in past practices and the signer had all the authority. None of those things are correct, sir. We, and I'll try to explain. We've reviewed citizens' comments, and nobody stated that somebody should lose their job. We did say that whomever signed the sheds and plat map in secret is not qualified or authorized for a decisional role with subdivisions based on JC County codes. Ms. Baldwin said it better. The RPC can't delegate plat signing approval to staff. RPC can only delegate a check-the-box review against RPC-approved subdivision codes for certain plats. This is not a code plat variance decisional role, but a difficult and necessary one. We have already presented to the county commission the need for another zoning staff member, but not to remove anybody. No material difference in relevant information or inaccuracies as to punishment existed at the end of the meeting compared to citizens' input. Ms. Baldwin explained the Tennessee code changed, changed their code regarding misdemeanor. However, citizens also cited the Jefferson County subdivision code still being handed out as current by the zoning office in Q1 and on the website as of last night. A misdemeanor is committed by filing a plat without RPC approval signature. No citizen accused anybody of a misdemeanor. Citizens did cite the Jefferson County subdivision code that the RPC should have approved. Everything worked out okay for the sheds, which are approved. If it's okay to intentionally leave a code. Plat map recorded in Jefferson County, maybe. I would not do that. The fix is easy. You can change septic approval from two-four bedroom to one-eight bedroom, then review, and if fully code compliant, sign approve and have it recorded. What is out of line is defaming citizens with inflammatory inaccuries, accuracies, Mr. Chairman. Lastly, non-code compliant plat signature is okay because it fell in past practices and signing all authority. That's not true. When you look at codes, your actions against the code. You look at, you either violate that code or you pass that code. All this stuff about sheds are approved, move on, no intent, we haven't had issues until now. Somebody told me to sign it. We've always done it this way, past prac. That does not fall into the equation. Now, having said all this, if I made a mistake, I will rely on Ms. Catherine Baldwin, who's more current and smarter than me, to, to help you guys figure out what's right.
You just want to give your heads up to your 30 seconds, fast, your three minutes, sir.
I'm done.
Okay. Thank you very much for your.
Thank you. It's the only part left.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a statement as well.
It's.
May, may I ask, I submitted my request to speak about the sheds on April 2nd, and I was put last on the agenda.
Okay.
I am requesting to reorder the agenda so that I can speak to this issue, which is very important to the people who are here at the meeting. I'd like to address this issue. Would you allow me to do that?
Bob, this is the citizens' input time.
Okay, all right.
We'll have time to.
I, I would like to be able to speak to it.
It's, uh, next on the, uh, the list after Mr. Billers is, uh, Ms. Kathleen Villers.
I'm going to be referencing this. I have a copy for each of you with highlighting, so if you could take one and pass it around, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Shall I start?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Kathleen Villers, 2202 Arrowhead Drive, Dandridge, speaking about authority to approve plats. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee and the public, I want to clarify, I am not calling for the removal of any county employee. I am not calling for that whatsoever. I inferred from the chairperson's comments at the last meeting that I was. The chairperson also suggested some of my comments were inaccurate. I take exception to that and point out the following, and this is the document I've handed out to you. The document I referenced is the Jefferson County subdivision regulations. They're posted on the county website. I confirm they're the most current and, in fact, current, um, as of last night, and I made a copy of two pages of this 50-plus page doc for each of you. The highlighted areas show what I quoted. The yellow highlights the need for the regional planning committee secretary to sign. On the backside, there's a. On the backside, there's a green, or excuse me, pink noted. That's the verbiage about the misdemeanor, which is still on our county regs. And the green highlights the unlawful buildings. So, given this highlighted area shows specifically what I quoted, if you say I am wrong or inaccurate, then it says Jefferson County is wrong. I merely cited what is in the Jefferson County subdivision regs. And how is a citizen supposed to know what is the correct regulations if they're inaccurate, if these are the ones being handed out? Hence, I felt the comments directed at me were inappropriate, and to use your words, sir, out of line. I'm not disputing, Ms. Baldwin. You had indicated that the misdemeanor wording was removed at the state level, and appreciate knowing that. However, these subdivision regs that you have in front of you are still an existing code here in Jefferson County. They clearly indicate that the plats need to be signed by the secretary of the RPC, and Ms. Baldwin confirmed that the zoning staff cannot sign. Past practice or precedent does not mean it is okay to ignore any of the county or state codes. If this had been going on in Jefferson County for some time, which it appears, then it's likely many plats have been improperly signed and are now recorded as such in the registrar's office. I think it would be appropriate to find out how many of these plats there are. 10, 50, 100, maybe more? And then ask proper authorities if the past ones do need to be corrected or not. Or is it okay just to accept what happened in the past, sweep under the rug those that were not properly signed and move on? As far as never been an issue until the sheds, maybe it's a good thing, sir, in the committee, that attention was paid to the sheds, or otherwise, this non-compliant practice, past practice, might continue on. And as far as the sheds, yes, a contentious issue. I think that plat needs to be corrected, including a review and approval signature by the RPC. Let me highlight quickly a situation that occurred over the weekend.
Ma'am, I'm just going to let you know your 30 seconds, pass your three minutes.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, I can't talk quite as fast. I am fighting this cold. I'll be really quick in finishing.
You're fine. Just want to let you know.
Thank you. Over the weekend, at the sheds, 25-plus cars, 50 to 75 people there on a Saturday, well into the evening hours. Was this an Easter service? Not sure. There was a cross in the window. We know a church camp is disallowed in A1. Most of the 50 to 75 people seem to be inside the existing very small three-bedroom, smaller, older home on the site. And it concerned a number of residents. Crowded structures can point to fire concerns. We have picked supporting this. And yesterday and today, a dump truck has been there, spreading a lot of gravel, seeming to widen the driveway by the smaller home, maybe to accommodate more parking. Do we possibly have group assembly, excuse me, group assembly going on here? In conclusion, obviously, the Jefferson County subdivision regs will need to be revised. And also, a little bit of additional research out there. There are a number of counties surrounding us that still have the same wording that exists in the regs, in particular, the misdemeanor and the unlawful buildings. And those counties include Sevier, Hamlin, Granger, Johnson, Wilson, Campbell. Thank you so much, and I appreciate the added time.
Thank you, ma'am. Deborah Epps.
If I start to cough, I mean- Hi, Deborah Epps. My address is 1750 Ambrose Lane here in Dandridge. And this is concerning the Mullins property. I spoke last month.
Finally. You don't have to start over. I didn't hear anything.
It's Deborah Epps, 1750 Ambrose Lane. I spoke last month about the Mullins property. I do have photo shows in red, the properties that are circled. There's three groups of people who do not want this in our subdivision. That shows, the property that's in blue right there is the Mullins property. So that gives you an idea of the relationship. The property that is ours, which is the very top one in red, we can see a, it's probably 53-foot semi-trailer's been parked up there too this whole time. I was reviewing the C2 General Commercial District, what that ruling covers. And one of the things that it says is that the intent of this district is to establish areas for compatible business activities that require high visibility and accessibility. I don't consider this request for this piece of property from Mr. Mullins to follow that. It also says the requirements of this district are designed to encourage the location of commercial establishments along major collector's streets and high-traffic areas for maximum convenience for both local residents and regional travelers. I also see that not affecting what business he's wanting to put there in storing commercial equipment. Nobody's living on the property. It's just a place to dump his equipment until he needs it. Some of the things that we had proposed was the noise from the heavy equipment going in and out. Another big concern is safety, because where this property is located and the driveway that he's wanting to use, there's sharp curves that are pretty much wooded with not good visibility. And as you can see from those photographs, there's a lot of really long trucks and flatbeds that will be hauling that equipment in and out. We're concerned that there's not enough base in the road to support the traffic, the weight of the equipment coming in and out of the driveway there that he's got noted on his map. We have concerns over property values being decreased because of it. And we have probably had in the last couple of months, 10 to 15 people comment about what in the world is going on on that piece of property right in the middle of a residential area. We don't want it there.
Thank you, ma'am. Last citizen that I have before Miss Allen is Gail Farzanigan.
My name is Gail Farzanigan. I live at 2535 Edgewater Lane, Dandridge. I want to say that I was surprised as a citizen of Jefferson County when I attended the last meeting of this commission, when the chairman impugned the reputation of Professor Villers, when questioning her excellent, and I mean excellent, research on Jefferson County regulations regarding approval of subdivision plats. I feel the chairman owes her a public apology. I'm certain that he didn't mean to hurt any Jefferson County person's reputation. But it did happen in a public forum, and I expect to see a public apology. Thank you.
Thank you for your input, ma'am. We'll move on down the agenda and to new business. And first item is final plat review for three lots on Kearney Road in Newmarket. Tanner Cliff, Tanner.
Hello. I'm just looking to try to finalize the subdivision of the lot that I have, which is adjoining my personal residence at 425 Kearney Road in Newmarket.
Tanner, our planner has taken a look at this, and she has some items she's came up with. And I'll let her speak to those as we get started.
Okay.
Are you the surveyor? You're the property owner?
I'm the property owner.
You're the property owner, okay. The file plat I presented has a number of things omitted that are stipulated in the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Nothing, it's mainly just missing information. You can either, and I'm comfortable with the- with the subdivision as long as it is done with the condition that the surveyor has to provide this information. The setbacks on there are, there were a number of issues. And I could read them, or-
Have you seen these issues?
Uh, no, sir. I have not.
You don't find this, Bob?
The tax information, I could not find. I think the tax information is incorrect. The right-of-way of Kearney Road is omitted. Provide information for your source of potable water. If it is a, if it's a public utility, it's lacking a signature block for the public- certifying that it's appropriately rep- You, the names of the adjacent property owners are required. Those were not provided. The signature block for the county road superintendent was omitted. The signature block for the electric utility was omitted. The front yard setback is 30 feet. Setback as referenced in the notes is incorrect. And the zone designation of the property is omitted.
Is there a copy of that I can have? And I just need to deal with that with the person that did my survey?
It's a decision by the body if they want to approve it with the conditions or they want the plat corrected and brought back.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Baldwin, you mentioned a 30-foot setback. Are you referring to that there off the road?
Yeah, front yard setback. It's the-
Could I?
The setbacks are referenced here, and its reference is 20.
Okay. But the-
You don't have a setback less than 30.
Okay. Understood. Oh, yeah, that looks nice.
Did they submit an electronic copy, I suppose? Or did you make a copy?
Not really. My intent with the place is the 2.23 acres, the flagpole lot there. My neighbor, who is on the other side there, is planning on buying that from me. And then I'm going to keep the 1.9, the long, skinnier one. I'm just going to keep that because it borders my property. So I'm not, I don't really have any intent to do anything with it. The only thing it would hold up would be him purchasing that 2.2 acre lot from me. And he just wants that, so nobody builds a house beside him, so.
So it's not going to put undue hardship on anybody, but you didn't make a third?
No.
So would you be willing to track this stuff down?
Yeah, I can. And it's all on this, everything that needs to be?
It should be, yes. I think if you got the same thing we got.
Okay.
What's your say?
Yeah, I can, I can do that.
We can motion on that. With that being said, what's the pleasure, boy?
I make a motion that we let him bring it back to us next month after he gets the needed information corrected.
I will, I'll second.
And second, any discussion on that? I'll go with favor of him bringing it back next month with the proper information. If you don't say I, I'll oppose.
Yeah, thank you.
Could you ask the surveyor to send a electronic copy of the plat?
Okay. Yeah, I have a PDF. I had him send me the other day, yeah.
It's very difficult to read one of those. So if you get a P, if he corrects it and sends a PDF,
Okay.
that will facilitate for you.
Okay. All right. As far as my environmental stuff, is it, it'll go through? Okay, so it'll be good. Okay. Thank you all.
Good as they bring it back in for me to sign a new plan.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Next item is item B, site plan review for an addition to an existing veterinary clinic located at 2040 Highway 11E West in Newmarket by Big Retreat Properties LLC.
Howdy. I've got nothing to say. Y'all got any questions?
I think our planner has a thing or two that she has found with yours as well, and he'd like to go with those. I just received this one.
It's fine. I'm afraid Mr. Garrett didn't follow the requirements of the zoning ordinance with regard to site plan preparation. So the zone designation of the property is not on the site plan. The width of the ingress egress point, I think you put the, a pipe that goes under your drive. But, and as I understand it, that's existing. Your point of access? Your point of access is existing?
Yes, it is existing. All I'm doing is adding on to the existing building.
Okay. There's no location map, your utilities and method of sewage disposal.
It's all existing.
I'm sorry?
Everything's existing.
Everything's existing. Says that you are going to pave the site?
Possible, yes.
There should be some direction as to where if you're paving, that where you're directing the stormwater to make sure that you're not, it's not entering the roadway that is being redirected. I noticed that there, the creeks on the back of your property?
No, the railroad's on the back of the property.
Well, there's a, the natural conveyance is behind.
Yes.
Dimensions of your handicap parking space is omitted. I wasn't sure what the secondary use of the property was. Oh, you're good. I was just curious.
It is a rental piece of property right now. It's a trucking company.
Okay. And there's a note on here about closing the median?
No, ma'am. Oh, yes, ma'am, there is. Yes, ma'am. Sorry, that was deleted. We grabbed the wrong one. That one, I am sorry. But no, that one is wrong. That one I did screw up on. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I mean, those were my comments. Those are the items that are requested in your zoning ordinance for reference on the site plan. If it's, if it's an existing situation like your ingress egress, that, that's fine?
All that's staying the same. It's just adding on to the side of it.
But you are paving and you are striping your-
I would like to-
New parking spaces?
I would like to pave that, yes.
Okay.
But that's, the paving amount is staying the same as is now.
Okay, so there's no new-
No new paving, no nothing. Only new that's going to be there is a new building.
Oh, you're not paving it?
The parking lot size is the same as it is now.
Okay.
That is not new.
Okay, but it's gravel now, so it will be asphalt.
I hope for it to be asphalt.
I'm assuming since they've got, I mean, it says 18-inch pipe under your, your-
Cobble underneath, yes.
So there-
That's per T-DOT.
Yeah, and if you're, if you're sheeting your water off into the ditch that that's obviously serving, that's fine.
Yes, yes.
I just want to make sure it doesn't-
The highway is higher elevation than what this property is.
Just want to make sure that it doesn't enter the roadway.
That'd be impossible.
Sorry, I'm not familiar with the site.
It is actually, it's close to where I live, and it is actually dropped down or maybe a foot from the, six, eight inches minimum.
I would say, yeah, even more, the ditch, the ditch line from the highway is probably a good 18 inches down. And then, yeah, yeah, where the actual building sits is lower.
It's right next door to Walker's Trucking, if you're used to going down 11E.
Yes. Right against Walker's Trucking, right there, it's mine.
I want Tom to give me a tour next month.
Of the county?
Yeah. Yeah, I need to.
Go drive, because you won't want to ride with people.
Deal.
So out of those things, Catherine, that you saw is some issues. The only thing, the handicap parking, the dimensions on those?
Yeah, I mean, when you hire a contractor, you need to dimension stuff just so you get what you're asking for.
Right. That's not happening. So with that being- So with that being, uh, being taken care of, do you see any further issues?
No, no. Uh, if he could just make those corrections on here when he submits it for his building permit.
I'm sorry, can, it sounds like some of the corrections may not be necessary.
Some are.
Yeah.
Can we go, so what are, what's the, what's left on the list?
Uh, dimensions of the parking spaces.
The handicap parking space. Yeah, provide dimensions of handicap parking spaces to be left and, uh...
That's pretty well it, 'cause you're, you're...
Anything else is existing?
Zone designation of property?
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's, for me, if I'm, it's hard to know what is zoned if I go on, um... So I need to know that so I can look at the appropriate zone district for compliance.
Yeah, I, I can't see anything on this small plaque. What's the dimensions of the ditch?
Uh, I believe it's forty by thirty-five or something like that.
So basically, it's the zone designation, the dimensions of the handicap space.
Forty feet by thirty-five point four four.
Somebody's showing off.
Yeah, enjoy that.
I guess I could just lie, somebody else could check me.
Enjoy it while you have it.
So, so with the parking spots for the handicap, I'm asking, does he need that before he paves it? Is that what you're thinking, or?
Um, it just needs to be addressed. To be honest, handicapped parking spaces, they have to be dimensioned differently. They, you also have to have an unloading zone that's, that's striped as well. You know, it's federal law, so it's not something you should...
Yeah, that's federal law, federal standard.
North Carolina code is what everybody references, so. So, yes, before you get your building permit or, we don't have any inspection enforcement, so... And I'm always trying to make sure that when he brings a contractor on site, that the contractor knows what's expected.
So according to the things we discussed, your piece contingent upon identifying the zone designation of the property and then providing the dimensions for handicap parking spaces. Does everybody understand that? I think you've got a question, Austin.
Nope, I've got a motion, but you finish, Mr. Chairman.
You go right ahead, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
What's pleasure, the board?
I move to approve the site plan contingent upon correcting the dimensions for the handicap parking spaces and putting the zone designation on the, uh, site plan.
Okay, we have a problem. Do we have a second? Do we have any further discussions? Being none, all those in favor of approving it, contingent upon those two items, please let it be known my saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? All pass. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on down the agenda, we are to item C. Resuming request from A one agricultural forestry to C two general commercial for a portion of property located at thirteen fifty-nine Deep Springs Road for twelve point six three six acres, Dandridge by Mullins Enterprises Incorporated. Tony and Brenda Mullins, Eric Mullins.
Eric Mullins. How y'all doing?
Good, well, sir. Okay. From last month's meeting, there was gonna be the document to include in the agenda packet that not constitute final plan to establish a separate lot for the purpose discussed.
And I've talked to Stephanie, and she pointed out some corrections to me, so this is fine because it's over five acres, so technically it does not constitute a subdivision. He's exempt.
Right.
Uh, so your consideration at this point is up or down with the zone requests, zone change request?
Okay, so that takes care of the item you had on there. Do we have any questions for Mr. Mullins about this?
No, I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the request. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor of approving the rezoning request, let it be known my saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you. I appreciate you all. I had no idea my neighbor was gonna be here tonight. I didn't know if he's gonna speak for me or against me. But I'm gonna adjust that light on the pole. It is, it is a little bright. I'm gonna have the power company come back and adjust it. And I plan to sow more grass in the agricultural part this summer, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins.
I'll move all my stuff inside.
I appreciate you all, sir.
Appreciate you.
Item D, resolution amending the subdivision regulations of Jefferson County, Tennessee regarding road construction bonding and as-built drawings.
Um, boy, we've slept since then.
Yes.
So in the, um, the last time that we met, we made quite a few amendments to the, um, to the ordinance or to the resolution, and I kept track of them. The opinion of probable cost was to be established by the engineer of record, and the amount of bond was to be a hundred and fifty percent. I think I had a hundred and twenty in there. That's under item B surety instrument. Um, I think everything, recording of the plat is item four on the front page, and it does clarify it shall be responsibility of the developer to ensure the plat is filed with the register of deeds office within forty-five days of the date of the secretary's signature. So that was in, added. You had, um, in the last paragraph, until all work is completed and recommended by the planning commission to the county commission.
Hold on, where are we at?
Yeah, last paragraph, what page?
Uh, that was on item six.
Item six.
Okay.
And then, under item seven, twenty feet, you wanted that changed to twenty-four foot of unobstructed width. And maintenance surety. You wanted to maintain, um,
Sorry.
letters of, oh, under nine, I'm sorry. Maintenance and surety. A maintenance bond for a period not to exceed one year. And then the big one, I think, was the as-bills required under certificate of satisfactory completion. And again, I apologize. We went over this several times about nine o'clock in the evening, and then we skipped three months.
Three?
I think so, yeah. So I changed, I wish I'd have gotten you this one. Under B surety instrument, we inserted the engineers shall provide an itemized list of infrastructure improvements and associated costs, the, which is an opinion of probable cost. The OPC estimate shall be submitted to the county road superintendent and in public utility providers for approval and shall be based on an amount equal to a hundred and fifty percent of the estimated cost of insulation. That was under surety. Under method of posting surety was one, an irrevocable letter of credit, which is the LOC. Back in here, and, um...
But what you're looking at is not exactly what we've got.
Right, and I just realized that. Um, the surety, so a surety bond is, is an insurance bond. Um, and this bond shall be, um... So that did not make it, did it make it in the last one I set out?
I, I think, in lieu of us moving on with business, and if you wouldn't mind, Ms. Baldwin, if we could get a copy of the most current?
Current one.
I'd entertain a motion to postpone this.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, but I have a question. If I could get a second?
Do we have a second? Okay, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Has any of this been seen by our highway superintendent?
I'm saying no, at this point in time, he's not.
Would it be appropriate?
I think Joe needs to be involved.
Oh, I definitely think he needs to be, to provide his opinion. A lot of this is just cleaning up the process when, when, specifically, when you have road construction that will be accepted and maintained by Jeff County as a public road and/or utilities that will become the ownership of your utility districts. The, most of it's just clarity of verbiage. The surety instruments are really important to make sure that you're clocking those. Also, I think by Tennessee code, that authority rests with the planning commission, does not rest with the county road superintendent. It is the responsibility of the planning commission. And so we, I clarified that quite a bit. The surety bond was something that, um, I clarify, I put in a lot of language to tie this down. Performance bonds by insurance companies can get a little dicey. So I put some language in here to make sure that the county is protected. And then the last thing was something that John Neal was specific, very specific about. He wanted as-bills for the roadway and the utilities submitted to the appropriate individuals. So that's in here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I may amend my motion, I don't know if I can do that. The person that seconded my motion would agree with my amendment, I'll...
I agree.
Okay. I'd like to postpone this item until our May meeting. And it would, I would love if Ms. Baldwin could get with our highway superintendent between now and then and let him review, and if he has any comments, those also come to the May meeting, if he has any comments.
I, I think it'd be a good idea if Joe would be willing to just be pretty with us for this.
You agree with that, okay. All right.
He's downstairs, correct?
In the basement.
Okay, yes, I just saw it signed today.
We have a motion, amended motion. Let's see, we gotta vote on the amendment first.
Well, he agreed to it, so I think, I think we're okay.
Okay.
We can receive the first motion and make the amendment.
Yeah. You getting all this now? Everybody knows what the amended motion is, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion?
I've got one question about the, uh, revoked of the bond here, the thirty days. Second, we're loading up.
Um...
Where you at? Which?
Surety bond.
Surety approval?
Surety bond. Number ten, surety bond.
Okay.
Surety bond on the front page.
Got it, thank you.
Yes, oh, thank you. Now, I'm sorry, redirecting. Second page.
Thirty days. Is it, even his question, was that enough time? I think it, that one reads.
It's always good to have more time, but when you're, I think when you're looking at these things, I, I think sixty days would be fine. But the one thing is that, since the performance bond shall contain the provision stating the bond may not be revoked except upon written notice by a certified letter to the county attorney, I've got a typo there, and the expiration date, if revoked, shall be at least thirty days after the receipt of the written notice. Uh, I assume that that is...
Is there any law for that, that's not?
Um, I think that's probably something that the county attorney should also weigh in on. Do you send all your bonds to your county attorney?
Not all of them.
They go to your finance, or do they keep?
We had a deal with that, and they expire, so they supposed to be handled by the finance department, but now...
And that's why everybody's so careful about it. I can't, especially during the two thousand eight recession, how many local governments not paying attention where, and, and development was stymied, and they let bonds expire or assurances? A bond is easy to cash out. An insurance bond is a little more difficult. I tell people, never wait till thirty days. Start two to three months making noise about it. One of my counties last week, or last meeting, we were down to five days for the bond expiring when they finally walked in the door with it. So that's, that's not a comfortable timeframe. So, um, I'd like to, maybe we could run this by the county attorney and see what he says.
Okay, so is there any other questions, comments, or discussions? All those in favor, postpone until the May meeting, let it be known my saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Next item, resolution twenty twenty-four eleven, amending the zoning resolution, objections, Kansas City, regarding a new zone, C three zone, wholesale White House commercial district presented by Austin Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my first comment on this in Catherine's memos, it said C attachment. I did not have an attachment. So I have not seen the comments.
Uh, did you send out the last draft we had? No?
Okay, oh, are your comments?
The last draft we had, um, remember, we didn't get to anything?
Uh-huh.
Like the last two meetings, and so I hadn't changed anything other than, in a time frame. Yeah, that was the one thing.
Okay, so you didn't have any comments about it? You were just directing to the document?
Um, at the time, it seems that one of the things that was, especially on John Neal's mind, was, um, the ability to make your farms more productive. I have talked to a number of different counties as far as this goes. There are a number of counties that do allow this, as, and so I made, I've, how I structured this was you have, and you do not have this in your zoning ordinance currently. You have allowable uses, and then you have prohibited uses unless the BZA says that it's similar in nature to something that is allowed, and then you can vote and say, yes, we're going to allow this. This is a con... Uh, this is a conditional use. Uh, it is allowed in Tennessee code, and basically what it does is that it still goes to the border zoning appeals, but they have a very specific set of conditions to consider to make the use allowable. So, uh, if you'll look on, uh, under item C, conditional uses... So, we add, I added light industrial uses with minimal offsite noise, dust, or visual impacts. This would include micro distilleries, micro breweries, micro wineries, uh, farm distilleries, uh, B, solar sit energy systems and wind energy systems, indoor recreation, including video game arcades, barriers, poolrooms, bowling alleys. I think that this was in some of your language. Uh, item D was what I changed significantly. Value-added processing and product sales of produce provided no more than fifty percent of the produce originates offsite. The minimum farm size is twenty-five acres. The examples would include jams, jellies, preserves, sauces, pickles, other things. All produce must be grown within Jefferson County or in a county which borders Jefferson County. All conditional uses must have access to public sewer and public water sources. I'm a little concerned about that from the standpoint of you don't have many areas with public sewer.
Be all at the cities, the...
Oh, yeah. And all conditional uses must meet requirements for transitional nuisance greenware applicable. So, this is a tool you currently don't use. I thought that, it seems to me that in all of our conversations, the thing that people are most concerned about is, like chicken processing facilities, beef processing facilities, um, which can have negative offsite impacts in terms of, uh, trucks, noise, uh, offsite impacts for drainage, um, smells, you know, a number of different things. But for your value-added processing, uh, for produce, I, I think this is a way to make your farms more sustainable. Um, one, if you're on a farm and you're, uh, and this is, uh, and, and I think they do this in Granger County, especially for, uh, areas that have wineries. Uh, it takes a lot of grapes to make wine, and so, it is an agricultural use, but they do allow grapes to be brought from other farms.
I don't think Granger County has that.
I think it's only...
Um, well, and it's, it's, it may not be Granger, it might be...
Granger has planning, but... I go before them all the time.
Are you sure it's not the county commission?
Granger County has planning commission.
Okay, I stand corrected.
Yes, to me.
Nice news, yeah.
Well, mu, so does Cock County, so there must be something in the water. Um, but one of the things I was trying to do is if, you know, there's an economy of scale of producing anything, and as far as making it profitable, you've got to have a really large farm to justify the expense and the, uh, economies of running processing for produce. In this instance, um, most smaller farms, unless they're really large, may not have that. So, if you allow, allow this to be done, um, they could take the produce from a number of farms around or within Jeff County, or farms in counties that touch Jeff County. I think you would get more of an economies of scale of producing the items we're talking about here. One of the things that I think everybody has concern with is, is the loss of farmland and the loss of being able to make a living at it. And so if you take that away, um, I don't think that's helping Jeff County, and I don't think it is conducive for the farmer to go and get a commercial zone designation, or worse yet, an industrial zone designation, where these things would be allowed. And at that point, they, if the farm goes out of business, then you have, um, you have industrial, wide-open industrial and wide-open commercial zone designations, uh, just scattered around, trying to make your farms profitable.
I think the biggest sticking point we've had in this is that being under conditional use and not being listed under permitted use. And so if I remember the conversations we've had in the past, that's where the sticking point's been, was not to put it under a conditional use, but it be allowed under permitted use, and not put all those... And that, that was a conversation John Neal had several times.
My understanding was that that was the reason that it, the provision couldn't be adopted by the county commission, is that people were concerned if it was a use by right, that it would not be limited to produce, one, um, and that it might, would allow other things like, um, the chicken processing or cattle processing.
I think it was actually supposed to be listed as value-added agricultural processing. I think agricultural was a word that was in that, and that was being permitted use. I, I could be wrong, but that's, that's the best of my regulation, recollection of that. The, the big sticking point with the whole thing was moving it from permitted, or moving it from conditional to permitted. Because again, you know, we're kind of tying the hands of farmers with that. Randy, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Austin, go ahead.
I brought this resolution originally, and the intent was to create a zone for these smaller businesses who have had to come in and apply for an industrial zone. Of course, when you apply for the industrial zone, I don't think any of us really want an industrial zone next to our house. So, there was all this pushback, and a lot of times, the, the business owner was not putting anything, in it, not putting anything in that was very invasive. It was actually pretty reasonable what they wanted to do, but because we didn't have a better place to put them, they had to ask for that industrial zone. And I've seen in this county, as I'm sure you have, a lot of heartache caused because somebody wanted to open a welding shop or a, you know, just a, a small business, and, but they, but they had to apply for the industrial zone. So my thought on this was to create the C three, to give a zone where those smaller businesses could fit in, and something that, uh, would make the community around wherever this is more comfortable so that they're not, you know, we don't, we never want to see neighbors fighting one another, so we don't want to see that coming out. As far as the value-added processing goes, I'm not crazy about putting it in this zone because we're talking about agriculture at this point. And, uh, you know, you and I have, have talked, I'm not opposed to it. My concern is, I don't know if we ever got a definition on value-added processing. I know that was discussed six months ago, and...
We read the state's definition of that that night, that they had put out.
But we do not have it in our regulations, so... Uh, my concern, and, you know, we're going back six months. In that definition, I couldn't see the difference in a thirty-acre tomato farmer who wanted to make their own salsa and bush beans. So, you know, anytime you rezone property, once you rezone it, you're allowing, uh, you're, you're allowing uses. The definition that I read, as I recall, and I probably should really do a refresher on this, was, I didn't see where the difference was between a small operation and a full-scale, I think what most would consider, industrial operation.
I think with what she put after that, some of the, the stipulations on it, it could still fall under permitted uses with the same stipulations, and she has those in what she has there.
Uh, I don't, uh, I don't believe those, uh, because it's in the conditional use, I believe those conditions only apply to those items. I don't know that they would carry over to the permitted uses. I could be wrong. Can Ms. Baldwin speak to that?
Well, item A is your permitted uses. If you want to add something as permitted, it needs to go into that section. Uh, prohibited uses, um, still is determined by the border zoning appeals, and you've got some example, there's some examples in there, one of them which is slaughterhouses and custom slaughterhouses. Again, the conditional uses is, would make the zone a little bit more, um, allowable as far as, and there may be things in the conditions that you want to move, like the micro distilleries, micro breweries, that can be, you can take that item and add it into your permitted uses. I mean, when we first, when I first did this, um, I think it was more for discussion than approval, to discuss, to bring things to the table that you might want to discuss. The only one that, uh, I garnered that there was some angst about was a value-added processing. So, that was one that I put some stipulations in, is to keep it small.
And you could still have it in permitted use with that stipulation attached to it, correct?
No. If, if you're going to add these, it needs to be, you need to have...
Conditions.
You need to have, uh, compliance established before allowing it. And you could just say, "Value-added processing is permitted."
I think we need to put the word agricultural back in that, because you can process lots of things.
Right.
And add that, yeah, metal, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's...
And that was the, the whole intent for the value added, it was strictly for agricultural.
Yeah, and this, it says, "Value-added processing and product sales of produce." But, um, why don't we say agricultural throughout this? And again, um, these were, we were just getting to the point of discussing this...
Absolutely.
When we said, uh, and as I recall, it was like nine, nine-thirty, um...
Absolutely.
And then we've taken a break from it, so I'm far yawned at this point.
What would be the benefit of adding D into the C three? I may not be grasping it exactly right, because I remember the time at processing plants, Mr. Fitch and I, and me, our neighbors, where they was wanting to put in one in, and they could have put one in on a smaller scale in agricultural, and it would have been okay. But because they wanted to kill X amount, they moved it up. So my, my question is, what prevents somebody from doing any of this in agricultural now? And what's the benefit of putting it in C three?
My understanding is if it's in agricultural, you can only, uh, do value-added for items that you produce on the property that you own.
So this would be allowing to go to other farms and bring them? So the processing that they were going to do, that facility, if it had passed, was for other customers, other farmers in the area that they too have. And I guess that's where my thought process is, will excuse me, I just don't want to do anything that's going to hinder the, the farm, the rural, the rural field of Jefferson County. And if we have to make them put it in a C three, will that affect a small-time farmer that's got a little stand-by-the-road? Where's our cutoff point in the making of C three? And if it's a silly question, just...
I think that needs to be directed.
I don't know what kind of answer you're going to get from me here, Randy, but I'll try. Uh, so, my understanding right now, uh, you know, we have a dairy over in New Market. They produce their milk one hundred percent. So they didn't have to rezone, they didn't have to do any, they, they're already in compliance because they produce one hundred percent of their product. When you, you take a cow, it's worth two thousand dollars, you butcher it, you're adding value to it by creating a consumable product. So, I believe if you wanted to, on your farm, open that up and slaughter your own cows and everything, you would be in compliance. And then our zoning regs do allow for, and somebody correct, is it twenty-five a month?
A week, twenty-five a week.
A week, okay. Uh, because a friend of mine has one in White Pine, and does beef and hogs and sheep. My concern is, and I think speaking to your point, was if we're trying to do something for agriculture, and I think, I explained my intent, uh, this wasn't for agriculture, this was for, like, machine shops and things like that, because I think we've seen the struggles some small business owners have had. Yeah, so with the agriculture, I would rather look at doing something in the agricultural zone, but of course, we would want to have restrictions in place to make people feel comfortable. And if you're, the issue is, and going back to that definition, is what is the difference in the, you know, a small family farm with a dairy and the bush beans plant? Because they're both taking, if they're bringing the products from the outside, they're both taking the products and they're adding the value. And that's where I got concerned was, if we say, yes, this property can be that, and in our minds, it's a small business, but it, could it turn into what most would see as an industrial zone? And, and in that case, we're effectively creating another industrial zone, and we're not addressing the problem that this was intended to address at all. So, uh, I think for moving forward, I'd like to revisit, I know, I think you've already done this. I'd like to revisit the definition for, what did you say, Brian?
Value-added agricultural.
Value-added agriculture. I would rather see if we could do something, even if it's just the first step, a heavily restricted value-added processing in the A one zone, even if it's heavily restricted, just to do something for, for agriculture.
Pardon me, but I think what we were doing here was kind of stepping up. This was not going to affect what was already allowed in A one. What was allowed in A one would stay there.
Correct.
A new part for the agricultural processing going to. It's, it is in addition to...
That's where I was getting, I didn't want to hinder the smaller farmer, just because he might have to go to C three, and I wanted to make sure that we weren't in that.
That's definitely...
Let me ask you a question. Currently, in your agricultural zone district, because Mr. Neal would always say, "If I take my tomatoes, I can make salsa from the tomatoes I produce. If I buy my neighbors on the next farm over, if I buy his tomatoes, at that point, I cannot do that." And so, the, that, that, that was the, uh, that was his concern, and that it was not allowed in agricultural, and it was not allowed in, in, in your commercial zones. So, we started creating the C three, that seemed to answer Mr. Neal's concerns as well of allowing, uh, production, utilizing your produce and other produce. And that's why we considered putting it in here.
Yeah.
So John Neal was for the ways it's worth it.
No, he didn't think it went far enough. He just wanted to say you could do it.
Again, it, the, the original conversation and the original intent with the agriculture was to see it in permitted uses, not in conditional, in this C three. And that was, that was the big sticking point where, uh, and just because we have some other areas, we need to tie the up on this and stuff. It's just something we'll be willing to revisit in the May meeting and get some clarification on some of those definitions and stuff, that way we could have a better conversation about it.
Yes, and I, I feel like maybe we've already done some of this, but I'd like to do it again.
Oh, yeah. I think that's what we're spending some time on, absolutely.
So, let me ask you this. Would it be appropriate, if you want to allow value-added processing in C three?
As a permitted use?
As a permitted use, then do you want to add it in the, in the agricultural zone district as a conditional use, so it is, um, so you can establish conditional? Because as I understand it, that's the thing you can't do, that he was definitely trying to pave a way to do that. Am I, am I correct, or is that how you guys understand it?
Clear as mud. Yeah, that's...
Y'all caught that, Randy?
You're, you're suggesting taking it out of this completely, and just looking at A one and amending what's there now to include this. And I think the intent was not to mess with what was allowed in A one currently.
Which we, we wouldn't be, by the way.
Right. But to move this from conditional to permitted in this, just to enhance the possibilities for value-added agricultural, and for value-added agricultural producing in the county. It was to enhance that, not to hinder it in any way. It was just to give another, another avenue for it to, to do more. Yes.
Like I said, the original intent was... Like I said, the original intent was to try and help these small business owners. John Neal brought this issue up, which I think we're all aware that it is an issue. My concern, I guess it really just continues to hinge on the definition of value-added processing because I was not able to wrap my mind around what's the difference in bush beans, bringing in truckloads of beans and curing them and canning them, adding value, and a little, you know, ice cream parlor or something like that. So I guess the, the whole argument there is going to hinge on, on the definition.
Absolutely, because one becomes industrial and one stays value-added agricultural.
And it's actually something that, it's very hard to do in zoning, from the standpoint of you're, you're talking about how big something is. You want to allow something, but if it gets too big, it needs to go somewhere else.
I think that's exactly what you're saying, and I think this.
That's where I'm at, where's the stopping point from selling a few jars of honey to mass production of honey?
Mass production of honey, yeah. It's what is considered a craft, what is considered industrial production.
Right. So there is definitely where we need to get some definitive language of what constitutes each. And, and we can continue this discussion if you all like, but I think until we get some more information in front of us, we'll just.
We're just, we're circling.
Yeah, but at least we're, we've got a, but you don't know where we're supposed to go.
Okay, is that a motion, folks, for this, this particular discussion? Yes, I'd like to make that motion. Second, any further discussion on the proponent of this discussion?
Uh, just, I'd just request that whenever we resume the discussion, that if Ms. Baldwin would provide us with, help me out, Ms. Chairman.
Tennessee Department of, or just a definition of value-added agricultural production.
Okay. Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, proponent, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion against. Thank you all, and again, a great discussion. And stuff we need to get some some. Okay, next item is the item F, resolution to increase the minimum lot size for the A1 agricultural park or zone. Mr. Wilson, thank you.
I want to relieve everybody real quick, I'm not looking for any action tonight, Mr. Chairman. We had, we had some discussion last month about this and you had mentioned perhaps some sort of a roundtable discussion. Do you have any idea how something like that could be accomplished or have you given any thought to it?
I have given some thought to it and I think we would need to involve our, our property owners, our agricultural property owners, some of our realtors, developers as well, you know, get a diverse group involved in that conversation. And I'm open to suggestions on moving forward with that.
Would, would, would it be proper, are you still in long-range planning, Randy?
I pray so.
You just show up to all the committee meetings, don't you?
I mean, I've got everything.
Would it be more appropriate for our long-range planning committee to work on that? I know we have a lot of business that comes to us monthly to attend to and I'm not looking to clog up the calendar.
I hate to add to anyone else's task, but.
I don't care to do it to Randy.
We could, and, but would also like the opportunity to be involved in that conversation.
Yeah, but I guess what I'm saying is if, if they host it, we're not tying up people that come here for their business to be handled, is that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so with that, I would make a motion to send this resolution to the long-range planning committee for recommendations. And with the resolution, I would also request that maybe this group could be involved if anyone here so chooses and any property owners that are interested, which they can handle the advertising and all that, but. So that, that's my motion.
There is a motion, we have a motion, do we have a second? I will second it. Motion second, we have any further discussion? I have some long, long range planning. Being none, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion against.
May I ask a question?
Yes. No, you're fine.
So we have a group that's been meeting at noon, well, we met today, we must not have met at night.
That's public service.
That's public service. And one thing I'd ask the mayor was maybe if we could establish a committee to look at some of these zone issues in depth earlier in the day, on the day that I came up here. And so he set up the committee and I don't know which, I don't understand the charges of each of your committees and I knew that it was a long-range planning committee, but you know, I'd like to be involved in the discussion so I can follow and, and I'm, I'm very much learning about agricultural, how you use zoning to protect and encourage agricultural production. So I need to listen to you guys and.
Are the ones you on that committee that did that, sir?
Are we talking about long-range planning?
No, I don't think it was long-range planning, it was.
It was the committee that met today.
That was public service.
Public service.
Yeah. But there's planning commission members on it, there's, I guess, I'm not sure how you constitute your committees.
It's a.
Five commissioners, I think only three of us show up. I'm just, I mean, I'm not trying to be rude or out of line, but it's really, we have the same three show up.
Yeah.
You have one that shows up that's not on the committee.
Yeah, he was late coming in though.
No, I came in on time, I stepped down.
Hey, I'll do upside, he, he did leave before the committee was over.
I did leave early and I know at one point when I stepped out, I actually bumped into one of the members of that committee who showed up late, but did have firehouse subs.
A little bit extensive.
Did you ever come to them?
Well, it, that's, since that one could, I wonder if we could get a committee to meet like that timeframe?
That would be up to that committee.
Yeah.
We can dictate that.
That would be long-range planning, if they were tasked with it, that would be the committee we'd meet with.
So I think Randy would.
Do they normally meet, do they haven't?
I was trying to look it up on my things.
Well, there's been some changeover in that committee, so they probably need a little bit of a reorganization to decide how they want to.
But you can see how confusing this is when you do something and you wait three months and then you do something else, especially when it's in a draft form and if, if you track it and, and work on one till you get it right, then you also have people who are informed that are be voting on it, how you arrived at something or how you, what you based your decisions on. So it really greases the skids once again, you know, when you're doing this at the last thing in the meeting, it's very difficult.
I agree entirely.
And if you can't, you, you can never know how many items you're going to have on the agenda to know if you're going to get to this item at eight or at 10.
Yeah, if we could have something put together when we, when the planning commission made it, so.
The last meeting was at 4:30, so, or, yeah, at 4:30 in evening. And it's Jimmy Carmichael and myself, Katie Huffaker, Mayor Potts was in it. So I would say reach out to the mayor and see which one he thinks just needs to be going to before we say where we want to sit. And I don't know how that motion would go, but he would know which committee would be better to handle.
We've already sent it to long-range planning because we voted on the motion.
One, I wish I'd spoken, I'm sorry I didn't speak up prior to, but if, if there is a standing committee that would be just like this meeting, 12 o'clock, fourth Tuesday, every Tuesday.
We do not have that. I mean, a committee could choose to do that, but that would be their business, so.
And we actually have an agricultural committee in the county and I think.
Yeah.
Involving the chair of committee or at least representation from that committee on this committee would be a good idea.
Yeah.
From, from everything that I understand, looking at your zoning ordinance, it does need some work and it needs some, it's very difficult to jump around like this.
I agree with that. Let's, let's go to Mr. Potts, Mayor Potts, and see what his thoughts are and let's, let's look at trying to get something to establish when we can have those.
And they're doing the short, short-term rentals right now, but I think that.
And we did.
And I, and I don't see it going much longer than maybe one, maybe one month, maybe one more, but at that point, that might be a good time. Okay.
Okay, moving on down the agenda to item G, discussion to confirm that all plat survey reviews and approvals must be done by the regional planning commission. If the regional planning commission should decide in the future to authorize reviews only, not approvals, but a non-planning commission staff member, this can only be done by following Tennessee state codes presented by Bob Presander.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to beat a dead horse or dead shed. Back in November 2024, Mr. Brooks asked our neighbor, our neighborhood to come to a meeting regarding the shed. We had this room filled, overflowed, there were standing room only here, there were people outside waiting to come in because of this very important issue that was affecting our community. I would point out to you that this weekend, when I went to the area where the sheds have been built, I saw approximately 200 people, none of them could speak English, I almost tempted to call ICE and everyone, every time I wanted to speak to somebody, they would stick a phone because you can get a translation off these things. But we have a group of buildings over there, so-called sheds, church, whatever they keep changing at all the time, that's impacted our neighborhood and the quality of life that we have. Now, in November 2024, the sheds were clearly denied by this committee without prejudice. It was a motion made by Austin Brook and it was denied without prejudice. On December 24, a revised shed plan was submitted and signed by the zoning office as approved. It was not signed by this committee or its secretary, it was simply not signed. The plat was filed and recorded by the register of deeds without final approval by this committee. Now, the crucial role of the RPC involves plat approval. This is why I sat on this committee, because I want to be involved in the approval of plats. Now, just the county never delegated, as far as I know, and all the studies that I've done, I maybe have a retired professor, maybe a retarded professor, when I read the rules, it sets clearly, you cannot delegate the responsibility of subdivisions to its staff. It's us that makes the decision. Now, the reporting plats were not approved in writing by the PRC or signed by the PRC secretary, Ms. Springfield, and, which is considered from everything that's said tonight as a misdemeanor. It's violating the regulations that we have on the books. Now, any building created in violation of the JC subdivision regulation shall be deemed unlawful unless I'm misunderstanding it. The county court may bring action to cause the buildings to be vacated or removed, from my understanding. Now, where do we stand with the sheds? The sheds should not be standing there because it has been disapproved by this, by this PRC. Where are we going to go from there, Mr. Chairman?
To, to answer your question, it was denied and that was the church camp that was being denied. I'm not sure where they come up with the idea that they wanted to turn the buildings that had been constructed into individual residences on a two-lot subdivision. But that is what was approved in, in December. It was not a church camp, it was not a short-term rental at that time, it was going to be two separate single-family dwellings, is what was approved. I went back and talked to a person who'd been chair for about 12 years of the planning commission, talked to other folks who have been on the planning commission, and this has been being done for a long time. Ms. Viller's, I think, done some research, Mr. Viller's or whoever did that research, but, and could not come up with it. Now, I'm not to say that you overlooked it, I didn't look at the information you had, but I've talked to the people that who have been doing what we're commissioned to do tonight for several years, several years. And it has been the common practice for that to be done in this county. Still today, our cities in the county, as long as it's in the growth boundary, are doing the exact same thing every day, this bottom.
Even though it's wrong.
Well, from what Ms. Baldwin told us, it is something that can be done if the planning commission chooses to do so. So I don't know what took place in the last 20 years, or however many years it's been, when someone said, hey, let's let them start doing the two lots. But obviously, at some point in time, somebody gave them the authority to do that because they've been doing it. And, and we can erase the past 20 years of history, I mean, it's been done. So either all those are wrong.
Yes, that's right.
Or, or there's a point in time that no one knows anything about, or that's, didn't get recorded because somebody was listening to somebody in the crowd right in the minutes and didn't jot it down. I don't know what took place in the past 20 years, but I know what has been common practice with this. That's where I'm at, that's what we've got to go on, I don't have the documentation, don't know where to start looking for it, but the people, our predecessors, that has been the common practice and you can go to the cities and talk to them, as long as it's in the growth boundaries, they're still doing it today. I talked to them today. I talked to them today. And Ms. Baldwin, correct me if I'm wrong, but I want everybody to hear this and I want to take that mic, so. It is a permissible practice to let that person do the two-lot subdivision. And the reason I was told, I said, well, why'd they do it? I said, what was meant to be accomplished by allowing this? And they said, because we were sitting there until 10:30 and 11 o'clock at night.
1:00 in the morning, I've been here for 40 years and I, before that happened, it was midnight.
Yeah.
If I could just say a word, when I started, reg, with the contract camp, instead of letting the state operate the county, was one of these issues. It was taking somebody coming in here wanting a permit to build a home, it's taken them somewhere up to two, three, four months to get a building permit, a separate permit. So they decided to go to contract and in that process, this is where this came into play and I think if you're here, everybody was here that night, John Neal made the statement that the reason we started doing the two-lot subdivision in-house was that our department can approve a lot quicker than they were doing it before. And as, if we get it approved, we can bring it to the planning commission office, the zoning, Tim and the staff, Tim would look at it and they said, you know, we're fine with him doing this, but to keep prolonging the farm, you know, Mr. Jones is wanting to give one lot to his wife, uh, to his daughter, to start a house and not keep them tied up for three or four months in this process. So all this came into play whenever they went into a contract county on Sippy, had to speed up the process, permitting process all over through the county. Because people were coming in here, the ones that came here, it's moved in here. I'd like for you to tell me how quick you got a permit, how quick you were able to build a house from where you came from. And this was the reason all this transpired. We go contract, we get a separate permit, you don't wait doggone two or three months, you know, seven, 10 days when I was here by myself, we sped it up now to, you know, five to seven. But you get your permit, we can take it over to the zoning, Tim at that time look at it right now, Stephanie is looking at it, which is qualified to do so, and we both sit down to make sure that everything is proper. If we had any questions, we would call David or whatever we'd be calling you. If we had any questions on the two-lot subdivision, are we looking at this right?
Just so you're not.
It's not that we just don't sign off on because it's our two-lot subdivision, we do our due diligence on it. And it's not to say we don't miss something sometimes because nobody's perfect, but that's But that's how all this came into play. Just to speed up and let everybody who wants to come in here and build, not sit here and go do red tape for four or five months or whatever, and the persons who want to sell their property lose the sale of their property. And I'm going to voice my opinion, if I can, about this.
Absolutely.
By doing this, you're going to be sitting here, I don't, y'all are the wire, having the lots come through like that, two-lot subdivisions. You'll be here at 10, 11 o'clock every night at planning commission to approve these. Now, I've got, you know, I've got property. Guy comes up, wants to buy my property, says, you on that corner, I'd be willing to buy that, I think. I'll give you $50,000 for it. I'm going, well, I really want it 25, so I'm going to act like, you know, I really don't want 50. But I'll give you 50 if you'll close this out in two weeks. I'm going to be in here, I want to buy it. If you can't sell it to me, I'm going to look somewhere else. Well, now, what are you going to do? Everybody's sitting here, what do you want to do? You want that property sold in that two days so you can make 25,000 more of what you was willing. So I'll call Eddie Garrett and say, Eddie, get that plat done tomorrow. Then somebody called me and say, Carter, get over and get me a separate permit, and get me a soil scientist, and get me a soil map this way. I've called Churchill over here, and Dr. County Attorney, have them do me a deed. I could sell you this property, even though I don't want to, I'm going to have it ready for you by Friday. Okay? All I've got to do is come in, I sign off on it, I take it to Stephanie. She looks at it, it meets all the requirements. We've got some new requirements we're putting on maps that you want done, that we'll be doing.
That's in your subrags. I did not.
If it's all on there, she approves, I approve it. It's recorded, and the guy's made his $50,000 on his lot. But now, with the process you're wanting to do, the guy goes, oh, God, I forgot. I've got planning commission to go through.
They're scared to death of planning commission. I'm Eddie Garrett, surveyor. I say this every day, in every county.
Mr. Chairman. Before there was a staff.
I'm a member.
Eddie, give, I realize that, Al. Give me, give me one second.
All right.
Okay. You've got the floor. Eddie, I'll come back to it.
You good?
Well, I'm just going to say that, you know, you're just holding up the process of people being able to sell property. You know, because the guy that wasn't, wasn't closing two weeks, he's going to have to wait for planning commission. I go in and, and take it to Stephanie. She goes, well, Tommy, you just missed deadline, so it don't go on till next month. And then it's got to be approved the next month. And then if there's anything wrong with it, then it goes the next month. So you're, you're looking to sell a piece of property that the people in this county voted to speed up the process by us going contract and just doing two-lot, zoning doing two-lot subdivisions to prohibit this from happening. Somebody sitting two or three months, want to sell a piece of property, lose the sale of property.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I want to address first the, uh, I, I contacted the county clerk. He couldn't find a resolution or anything. Uh, I think some citizens have looked through minutes. We haven't found where this body ever delegated that authority. So I have to assume that it wasn't done.
Austin, I'm going to challenge on that right there. Just because you can't find it doesn't mean it wasn't done. Somebody was at peace somewhere along the way with it being done, or it would have been protested before 20 years.
It was done at county commission.
Okay. So if we looked at county commission.
That's where, that's where it's at, when they created the zoning department. I was here. We didn't have a staff.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, if we let everybody in the audience talk, it's going to.
I, I understand, but this is something. Okay, Austin, you've got the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if that is the case, if this body does choose that they want to do that, I think there should be like a formal delegation done. Just so from here on, there is something that we can point to and say, if that's what this body chooses to do. Uh, just an opinion. We have had citizens quoting things that they have found on our county website relating to our county regs. If those are incorrect, we need to correct those. If there's anything, or if it doesn't match up with state law, we need to correct that.
There's two-lot subdivisions. Is two-lot specified in anything that's been quoted?
That, I'm just saying.
I'm just asking the question.
I'm just saying.
Is, is the two-lot subdivision being specified?
In general, if we have anything on our website, I think we need to make sure we go through it and that we're in compliance with state law. I don't, I don't think that's controversial. I think we can agree that, you know, we want to make sure we're doing it right.
And, and let, may I ask Ms. Baldwin why we're on that, so we're not having to circle back to it? You said that is a practice that is permissible, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Everyone heard this?
No.
No.
Okay, I asked Ms. Baldwin if that is a practice, the office signing off on two-lot subdivisions, is that a permissible practice?
Under state law.
Under state law.
Under Tennessee code annotated. But you may or may not believe this. Uh, the legislature enabled up to 25 lots to be approved by staff. If there is multiple plats, meaning that the engineering is done, a preliminary plat has been done, engineering for roadways have been done, they can approve up to 25 lots. Now, I don't know anyone who does that, except for like Knox County, City of Knox.
About every county around is five lots.
But the legislature has said 25.
Okay. Let me follow up on Ms. Baldwin real quick. We're not wanting to do 25 lots. We're just wanting to.
No, I even question whether I should mention it, but it is in Tennessee code.
We want the two lots together.
Uh, let me, let me address a couple of things.
Yes, ma'am.
One, it is not unusual for Tennessee code to change, and local ordinance is not to follow suit. But state law preempts. So if state law says it is no longer a misdemeanor, that rules. I don't care what your regs say. Uh, so it's assuming that that's a, you want to say that a misdemeanor has occurred, that is not true. State law preempts. This is standard for two lots in every county that I have ever worked in. The only thing that was, that is, it is standard protocol. The subdivision plats still have to comply with their subdivision regulations. Uh, I'm sure that Stephanie and Tom are doing that appropriately. Uh, if they determine that the plat does comply with the subdivision regulations, that is just checking the boxes. I said this last time. If you want to effectuate change, you're looking at what you're changing as far as the criteria within the subregs. Otherwise, they're checking the boxes, just like I do when I give you a list of things omitted. I'm checking boxes. That should be corrected. I'm sure they're doing the same thing. Once the plat has been approved by the staff, it still has to be signed by the Secretary of the Planning Commission. And the way it reads is the duly elected secretary by the planning commission. That's how the, the verbiage in state law. So I think the only mistake was made was that it was not coming to get Ms. Sue to sign them. As far as any of them being unlawful or anything like that, I don't think that that's the case. Uh, I think from here forward, I agree, Austin, that there should just be a vote to clarify. But i- if you would determine to not allow the two-lot subdivisions to be approved by staff, that would be, uh, different from every city county in the state of Tennessee, probably.
May I ask a question?
Ask, you go ahead.
I, I live in the Forest Glen. I lived in the Forest Glen subdivision. There's about 20, 30, 40 acres there. Is it possible someone to just create a subdivision within a subdivision?
Yes.
It's just, just, I mean, so I have seven acres, I have seven acres of my property in the subdivision. Tomorrow, I could go to Stephanie, say, I would like to create a subdivision.
A two-lot.
A two-lots in my seven acres. That is, will that be permitted?
If you meet the criteria.
What is the criteria?
Of the subdivision regulations. The primary requirements are in the final plat. It's under Article Two. The primary requirements of the information that go on the plat is in Article Two. The criteria for two lots is under the Article Three, under the section titled Lots. It lists the, uh, uh, things like the frontage on a public road. It mentions easements along the side rear lot line. Uh, it says if you've got a creek running through yours, through your property, it has to have a 20-foot easement for repair and buffer. So the, the criteria for the actual lot is in Article Three, but the items that go on that plat are in Article Two.
Thank you.
And if you meet those, you can get your subdivision approved.
Can't wait.
And that is state law. You cannot arbitrarily just say, this person meets this set of criteria, this person meets a different set. It's a level playing field.
Mr. Chairman, do I still have the floor? I wasn't done. Mr. Chairman.
Give me one second right here.
It's a private issue.
Uh, I would just ask that no comments from the audience. We had citizens' comments already. So if we let one, we got to let them all.
Austin, proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, there was a little bit of talk about the sheds, and I was just going to clear up the timeline if, if that's permissible. And I'll be super quick, I promise.
Austin, I ask this question moving forward. With any further discussion about the shares, because I think everything to be discussed has been discussed and been said is been permissible, and it's done.
If I could just speak to a timeline, just clear up an inaccuracy.
Absolutely.
And I'll be super quick, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the first thing that happened, the group asked for a church camp. That was denied by the BZA. Uh, the next thing that happened was they came before the regional planning looking to do a three-plat subdivision. I believe, uh, most of us were, well, some of us were here and would call that. That was denied without prejudice. That was in November. We did not meet in December. And then, uh, a two-plat was approved in the zoning office, which sounds has been standard practice. I would just again say, if that is the, the standard practice, I think since no one could find anything pointing to that, I think if that's what this body is wanting to do, that there should be some sort of a formal action on that to move forward.
I would like to talk to our attorney.
That's fine.
See what that would, need to consist of to do that, because if we've been doing it, we're just making it permissible for us to do something that somebody, and I'm not going to state my source, county commission already give that authority.
Well, we asked for the source and it wasn't provided, so.
County commission, and if we need to go back and dig on those minutes, maybe that's something that shows in those.
Yeah, I asked for that in January, but, uh, just a couple. I asked for the source, wherever it was. My understanding under state law is it would have come from this body. That, that, of course, like she spoke to that, that can change. So perhaps it was different 20 years ago.
The county commission has no purview of your subrags.
Okay, well. The, I think Ms. Baldwin's addressed this two meetings in a row now, that all plats are to be signed off by the regional planning secretary. So I'm sure we're going to correct that moving forward.
I think we have already done that, and there's actually some waiting for her to sign.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Carter spoke to this, that we don't know how many lots it would be if, if we were to move forward with that. Is there an answer, like if, if we were to say we want all plats to come before this body, I mean, would that be 20 a month, 40 a month? Does it vary? Do you, is that, that may be a hard question to answer on the spot. Yeah.
I mean, she just not had five to sign for tonight's meeting.
From last month to this month?
No, just from last week.
Just from last week, okay.
So if, if you look at five a week, it could be 20.
Could be 20, 20 per month. Okay.
Five a day.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
With that, I yield.
Thank you, and thank you for being thorough in the timeline and making those corrections.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion about item G? How this body wants to move from here on. And, and again, we, we know that past, past, past practice has been established. We do understand that all our neighboring counties do this, but they do five-lot subdivisions. We're just wanting to keep it two, as far as I'm concerned. That may be a little conservative, but Randy, you have.
I'd like to make the motion postpone it to next month or until the time that you can get with the attorney on that.
I'll, I'll second that.
We have a motion to second. We're having a further discussion about postponing until, he said, next month or until. Can you give Doug and give clarification on what needs to happen?
Um, the, the one caveat, this is either combining or separating two lots. And that is with no utility extensions, no road construction, no, uh, any kind of, anything that affects roadways or utilities cannot be done by staff. That rests solely with the planning commission. And I, it doesn't matter how many lots you're looking at.
But that's not driveways, that's roads.
That's roads. That's roads. And, um, I don't, I don't know many counties that do five, with the exception of like a Knox County. But two is very standard.
Okay. Ms. Baldwin. Austin, do you have something to say?
I want to just hear.
Okay, good deal. Is there any further discussion on postponing until, with Mr. Brown? Let me get clarity and have a move forward. All those in favor of postponement, everybody now must say aye.
Aye.
Although opposed, motion passes. Okay, we have one citizen that has sat patiently and waited for her time to, to speak because her item was on the previous agenda, not tonight's agenda.
All right.
So if Ms. Carolyn Allen would step forward.
Thank you. My name is Carolyn Allen, and I live on Kettner Road in White Pine. And I have a question for this body. If this body makes a decision regarding an allowable use, I guess it's Board of Zoning Appeals, allowable use in a particular zone, but later reconsideres that decision and believes that that decision was made in error, what is the procedure to correct the decision?
Parliamentarily?
Pardon me?
Parliamentarily, the procedure?
How do you fix a mistake?
I think someone from, and my parliamentarian is not with us. But I would understand it to be that the folks who were on the winning side of the vote.
The prevailing side.
The prevailing side, one of those, thank you.
You mean.
Somebody who voted for it.
Okay.
Would have to bring it back up.
So, okay, someone who is on the body?
Yes, on the body. And it's, by rolling that, Randy.
Make sure I understood what he was saying. The way I understand it on county commission, if we have something that fails, the one on the prevailing side, if I voted against it, and it, make sure I'm saying it right. If I vote against something and I'm on the winning side, I can bring it back up. If I change my mind and I feel like it was a good motion or a good thing after I got more information, I can bring it up. The losers cannot bring it back up. Is that the way you understand it?
I probably would have said the failing side, but, but your words fine too, Randy. I find myself on that side quite regularly.
So does that give clarity, Ms. Allen, to what you were asking? Somebody who, somebody who's on the prevailing side of the vote with that particular.
Yes, I think I, I understand. Someone who has a change of heart.
Can bring it back.
And was a prevailing, the prevail, someone on the prevailing side who has a change of heart must bring it back up as a resolution.
More knowledge, more, something to, you lied on the subject.
Okay. Are you curious about why I asked this question?
No, not really. Absolutely.
All right.
I spoke out of turn. I should have followed you.
In your previous meeting, there was a proposal for an overnight truck idling park on Phillips Road. And the applicant asked if that was an approved usage in the C2 zone. This body or. This body or BZA agreed that such a facility, a storage, parking kind of truck park facility was a, was a, an allowable use in the C2 zone. And the ref, and the reason that this prevailed was that someone said, well, Pilot is right there at exit four as well, and they have a truck park in their C2, so I guess this applicant can have a usable, a use, this kind of use in a C2 as well. I think that's a mistake. I think that's an error. The businesses are not comparable. There's a difference between a primary business that sells at retail, fuel, convenience store, fast food, and has as an ancillary, extra back parking lot for the convenience of their fuel customers, and someone who invites trucks to come and park overnight. This is not comparable. They are not equivalent. They are very different. So, my question for this body is, how can we decide? How can we affect a change in this allowable use in C2 that we now have very good reason to agree is not an appropriate C2 usage? I've been enjoying the 66 pages of the zoning here, and I find in the industrial district listing, some permitted uses of, well, refinement of raw materials, truck terminals, mini warehouses, warehousing, indoor storage, outdoor storage yards, outdoor storage of motor vehicles, et cetera, in I-1. And I'm wondering if this body would reconsider a truck parking overnight facility to be an allowable use in I-1 and not in C2, and change the decision that they have made.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Yes, Austin.
You knew I had something to say, didn't you, Mr. Chairman?
I figured, the hand's up, give the way.
So, I believe the decision was made by the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is the five-member board that meets bef, right before the regional planning, which Mr. Bales and I do not sit on. In the past, I can speak to this because I've done it as a commissioner, the BZA has the authority to rule on that. The County Commission has the authority to remove it from the zoning regs. And that has happened in the past. So, I, I don't know that there's any recourse with the BZA, but there is recourse with the legislative body of the county, which would be the County Commission. So, that would be, that would be the, the place to go. I don't think...
You're directed, Ms. Allen, to go with County Commission, please.
Yeah, I mean, good luck. As far as...
Also, if I can speak to a minute, it was not just the Pilot. I think Deep Springs come up into the conversation, a couple that are down there as well.
Well, there's lots. It's a retail, fuel, fast food, candy...
Overnight parking.
The whole nine yards of a commercial establishment with retail sales. And that's not what, what was just announced. Just a little curious, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Next, I'm on the agenda, I'll lend, if there's no other business, I entertain the motion to adjourn.